11 o'clock, please call me in order, please stand and join me in the club.
What do you do to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all?
And please join me in a brief moment of silence for all of our first responders and men and women in the armed forces who are protecting us, both domestic and abroad. Thank you. I entertain a motion to approve the minutes from the December 2nd meeting. Motion by legislator Klein, second by legislator Trenal, any additions, deletions, corrections? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same as approved. First resolution, PS1, appointing members to Sudo County Fire Advisory Board. entertain a motion for that by legislator Emmons, second by legislator Chesborough. Any questions? Don, could you refresh your memory, there are a few openings on this still. Are you looking for members? And if so, can you briefly tell the towns that encompass those districts?
We actually had two that just dropped off in December. So, we're looking for replacements for them. One of the districts is Sandy Creek, Wilcona, Brentfield, that area. The other one is Central Square, Claude North.
You also had one on Williamson.
So, got one, they're arrested party, so I'm gonna bring it up in our next meeting. So, one of them, and we're still actively looking for somebody to fill the other.
Okay. That, any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same as approved. Next one is a resolution appointing members to the EMS Advisory Council, EMSAC, for 2020. Motion by legislator Klein, second by legislator Chesborough. Any questions? I did just wanna note that the chair of this board reached out to me to meet and discuss some of the EMS issues that we have in the county. And I will take him up on that at a later point in time. And he has also started to forward some minutes along to us and promised that he would continue to do that. So, we actually have advisory boards that are advising us on certain situations. So, hopefully, nothing else, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same as approved. Next resolution, PS3, is establishing salary for the ADA position. District attorney has found two highly qualified individuals to fill the positions that we had put into the 2020 budget for ADA positions, starting salary at eighty-two thousand three oh five. entertain a motion on that, legislator Emmons, second by legislator Mangano. Questions? Legislator Klein?
Sorry Greg, I couldn't talk to you the other day, I'm out in the north field, probably a thousand yards from where I live, and I don't have my fuck with it. But, we're here today, and this is something, and the reason I didn't call you back is the whole committee should hear this. Okay, this is a committee, and the committee makes decisions on these things, not this one individual. In here, let me go back, November 4th, and then it was resumed to November 7th, was mostly dedicated to discussing budget matters. And going through that paperwork, I don't see any discussion from you saying that the budget's not right. Now, I assume, and I can only assume this, that I don't sit with you folks like that, that's that noise, Don, but I'm gonna understand it the best I can, that apparently this budget was approved by you and him, correct? All right. Now, you've got in here that, and these positions were established at sixty-eight, eight thirty-nine, there was three of them, there's two of them you wanna move, but that's your loss. You've got here in your, in this machine of paper here with all your requests, that you have found the ADA in another county that is prosecuted, has experience, on and on, and that's fine. My question, it always comes in the mind, because I was an employer and filled a lot of people during my career, why, and I don't need an answer to this, but you always gotta put in the back of your mind, why is this person leaving that? Why are they leaving that position? And the trouble with this little old horse, is it's hard to train a new horse to be like you or Mark Moody. When you get somebody that's brand new, out of school like that, I understand it's a learning, I understand that a hundred percent, but between the experience you have and Mark has and a few of the other people he has in your office, you can train somebody who knew that will be like your thinking, and like how you wanna be presented like that. An old horse will still do the same thing, they're gonna run to the side, one way or the other, it's just the way it is. And how long before this person becomes dissatisfied who worked in our county? Because obviously, we don't give out money like other counties, we don't have it. I, I, I just don't understand why this is coming up now. You say you have somebody good like that, we established these salaries. This man came to us with a budget, we okayed that budget. Now, he's back here again looking for quite a lot more money. And Greg, I love you to death, you know that, I'll carry your petition, he's very highly, because he's a human being, you're a very human being, I'm not done yet.
Can you have comments on this?
But, the point is this, Greg, this isn't the first time that you've come to us who want more money for these people. I mean, this is recurring, recurring, recurring.
Hold on one second, county administrator wants to go, and I'll go to you. Absolutely. One of the reasons that these two salaries are budgeted, I think probably at sixty-eight, is that when this county has a vacancy, or creates a new position, it is budgeted at the lowest end of the range, not knowing what a person's gonna come in and ask for. So, that's why it's budgeted at sixty-eight, which is the lowest under the range for that grade law for an attorney. We know that they may come in, and there may have to be some negotiation, but usually that gets paid for because of the job, or the position vacant for a while, this is the case here. What, each, each position line in the budget is in the budget, but that's not a line that we draw money out of. The line we draw money out of is the, is the total line of about fifty-one thousand dollars. And so, that's why vacancies can sometimes cover, if you have to hire somebody in who's got experience, thanks to their age. So, that's a short explanation as to why it was budgeted at sixty-eight, because we have always budgeted at the low, low end of the scale. When there's a vacancy, we go to where there is a new, new position created. We don't wanna telegraph to a new person that, hey, maybe we'll go another twenty thousand.
Greg?
No, I appreciate it, Greg. And, yeah, these two individuals reached out to me, they are currently in the DA's office right now, talked to them, we're likely to be looking at the switch here. They are not the only attorneys to leave that particular office. In fact, that office has seen a number of people leave in the last couple of months for a variety of reasons. But approached, came with the idea to, they heard I run a good office, I'm supportive of my staff, and that basically, we treat my employees perfectly. For what amount, I have education, I'm a county visitor with education. I talked to them about coming up here and what their job would entail. These are experienced attorneys who haven't seen a town court for a handful of years, more experienced than you do, fellas. And I explained to them that, due to the changes in the law, that everybody's pitching them to cover in town courts, including my senior staff and myself, that we'd be covering Tep Court, which is the new court that got established on January 2nd, and what that would entail. Put it all out there, still wanna come aboard, knowing what it entails. When we talked about salary, the one thing they said is, they simply can't take the payback from where they're at now. So, I can't legally inquire what their salary is, but I said, where are you looking for? Well, I need to have something that's commensurate with my salary, that's all I can ask you. So, you tell me, what's the salary you need? And this is the stuff that climbs up most closely to the stuff that they're already at, in the office that they're at now. I can tell you, I've spoken to other prosecutors that I know in their office, I've spoken to defense attorneys, judges in that county, they're all there, enjoy a sterile reputation. I was told without equivocation, I'd be lucky to have them. So, I'm asking for the support of the committee, so we can get the people here that we need to deal with the new discovery, the new bail obligations, the new cat court, so you can be all over applications. Because unfortunately, I'm lucky with these two applicants, but there are no other applicants. These aren't the two applicants, quite literally, I had extended offers to three other people, two of whom had accepted, and then called to say they had second thoughts, because of my court requirements, Tep Court requirements, they decided otherwise, and rejected what they had accepted. These two people reached out to me, quite honestly, if I don't hire them, I don't know whether I'm gonna have some of these positions. That's the end of the day, puts the community at risk.
All right, Greg, one more question then. You have, and it's lineup, doesn't matter, there's three more attorneys in there that you have, or district attorneys, assistance, for once for seventy-three thousand sixty-three, and two others for seventy thousand nine twenty. How is this gonna reflect with these allegedly two new people?
Okay, I talked with the staff, I didn't tell them the exact salary, but the lower end people that you refer into, are individuals that joined our office either at the beginning of last year, or midway through 2018, again, they're a year and a year and a half, and they're practicing as attorneys, and both of them are someone from the community, have been practicing prosecutors for several years. So, the pay is commensurate with their experience and their ability.
I'm glad you're in the office, not me.
Can I address this personally? Greg and I have not had a conversation about this, but I can tell you this, I worked in that prosecutor's office for ten years, so it's a small community. Of course, these people reach out to me to find out about this, and I can tell you, salary discussion aside, that's not my business, but I can tell you, the two prosecutors that you speak about are excellent at their job, the chairman and myself, we've worked with them for, I was there for ten years, and they're excellent prosecutors, and again, I agree, we'd be lucky to have them here. There's no comment on salary, I'm not gonna discuss that, that's not my business, but their work ethic and their abilities, great to have in this county.
Any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next resolution, it's establishing salary for the rail patrol lieutenant, they had a retirement, and they're looking to move somebody up from the end of the department. And set the salary at eighty-five four oh seven. We have a motion on this, motion by legislator Emmons, second by legislator Greco. Questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Next resolution is a budget modification to accept a grant for the hazardous materials emergency planning grant, in the amount of five thousand one hundred seventy-two dollars. Motion by legislator Chesborough, second by legislator Trenal. Any questions to debate? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same as approved. Make sure you sign the budget modification for companies. Next, we have some appointments to the Community Safety Initiative Committee. Please note, there is one addition, that's Tom Jennings, who is the superintendent of the Palaski Central Schools District. I will enter a motion by legislator Greco, second by legislator Mangano, I think Mangano, familiaris Mangano, or what they call it. Legislator Laurie. I just wanna make sure I get it right at least once. If I can separate, I'm really getting it right, okay? Any questions on that? So, just so you know, this group has been working diligently on a number of aspects throughout the county, I think all the department heads who have been involved in this task as well, we have accomplished a lot, particularly early getting school resource officers in the school districts, and we're just, the amount we've accomplished is unbelievable. To be able to have a school superintendent there, I think that'll be a great asset. Anything else? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same as approved. Next, I'd like to go into reports.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Start off real quick, just went off to a couple items on the December 2019 report, and then just talked to the 2019 year, or year-end report for December. We had about average, nine-one call, nine-one wireline call, calls answered, wireless calls answered was up a little bit, largely because we, you know, didn't have a lot of still lines, not on the road, so. We were back around eighty-one point eight-two percent for nursing calls answered within ten seconds, and for people that are new to the committee, the standard on that would be National Emergency Number Association is to be, have ninety percent of your calls answered within ten seconds. And we definitely strive to do that, but it's a direct correlation with the month of staff, and we were doing training during the month of December, cross-training some fire dispatchers with the law dispatchers, which shortened us up even more than normal, but you'll see when we get to the 2019 year total, we're still in the same range, so. Something else of note is request for information, there was four hundred and fifty-one requests for recorded audio files for stat reports in December. Average, we see about seventeen. We had two thousand, or sorry, had two hundred and four between January 2019 and the end of November 2019. And just in December alone, because of the automatic discovery laws, and ramping up, getting everything ready to go, we had four hundred and fifty-one. And that was prior to us putting on the new data analysts that we created in the super shared budget, so December was very, very busy for the office. Biggest thing really of note activity is bringing, we did bring McP ambulance on the mobile data system now, which only leaves NOKA ambulance, Masuka City ambulance, and Save Act ambulance not on mobile data, which is a good combination, making a lot of headway there. And worked with priority dispatch to keep, continue on with our Pro-QA software. We've had a couple follow-ups, follow-up meetings after one cold night on COVID with that, and I continue to spend a lot of time and energy working on that project to get it up and running, so. Any questions on December, or can move into the year, year-end? Okay, so, 2019 year total, and as you'll see, about three to one wireless nine-one calls answered versus wireline calls. So, that pretty much goes on par with everything that we see throughout the year. Our emergency calls answered within ten seconds was eighty-one point four-six, as I mentioned, the U.S. standard is ninety percent on that, and with us being so short-staffed most of last year, that's why that number's down from where it should be, but since I've been here, we've yet to be around ninety percent, so this speaks to our staffing needs going forward, so. Request for information, six hundred and fifty-five, as I mentioned, four hundred and fifty-one of those were from December alone, we had two hundred and four from January to November. Some projects that we worked on, nine-one-two, our backup center, we added four radio console positions, we've redundant functionalities, so we actually have backup communications and paging abilities at nine-one-two, as well as added four new cat positions. So, our backups site is almost identical to what we have at nine-one-one at this point in time. We're working on a project right now to finish up a couple home positions, and we'll be in very good shape there, which is a huge improvement from where we had been, so. Radio system, adding some portable radio consoles, we also brought up some fiber connectivity for the vacancy between Anadaga and Sudo County, which is a huge thing for us. We've seen, since the radio system has actually been live, we've seen microwave fade between Anadaga and Sudo County, which in the middle of the night, depending on the weather and the atmosphere, we've actually bounced, our sound consoles have gone offline overnight, intermittently, so gives our staff a good, good practice for their backup systems, but it's ideal to try and keep everything working operationally, you know, the way it's supposed to be, which this fiber is going to do that for us now. So, also negotiated, we made this contract with Moro last year, which is a five-year contract going forward, which will help us with our upgrades and stuff as we move forward. Training, we did, we hired five people, four people made it consistently through our recruit training. We had four call takers that were trained over to fire EMS dispatch, and then at right at the end of the year, we were cross-training fire EMS dispatchers to city law dispatch, and they're gonna be finishing up their training at the end of this month, so. We added the communications technician position, and turned on mobile data for all law enforcement and most of the U.S. agencies, the other ones that I haven't, I spoke to that aren't on yet, we are actually currently working on, NOKA has started using their mobile data in the past week, and should be completely transitioned over by the end of this week. Save Act's waiting on a laptop, and Masuka City is actually coming onboard this morning. So, there's some huge, that was a huge undertaking, getting that mobile data system up and working, first time we've ever had that in this county, that law enforcement and EMS are able to remotely see all of our data, so. Also, deployed our Pro-QA software, our emergency medical dispatch protocol software, which is a huge undertaking as well, to move us off to, off of our card sets and manual process of answering medical calls, to working with the software that drove us through the threat, determinates and stuff. Along with that came a very intensive quality assurance program that we continue to work on, and that's what we're spending the majority of our follow-up time since I co-led that project, so. Spending a bunch of time working on GIS updates, and been really struggling in GIS territory, so let me bring up some more discussion on that this year, because nine-one, next generation, it is completely reliant on GIS, and we're barely able to keep the streets and new addresses and stuff that are being created in the county up-to-date in our system, which is an issue, because we can't dispatch somebody if there's not an address there, so. Worked with the sheriff's office to kick off their records management project, there's a lot of work that we started doing on that, did it on train, so plan to continue that into 2020. And then automatic discovery, we spent a bunch of time working on the sheriff's office, DA's office, and IT to try and figure out how we were going to get over that big giant hurdle. We're, we're making good progress, our data analyst is onboard now, and she's doing an awesome job trying to get us up to speed. The biggest thing is we're just, with it being so new to everybody, we don't have a strict process down, so some of the time we get all information from the ADA, sometimes we don't, sometimes we don't get information correctly from the law enforcement agents, it's across the board, so we're all learning to get together on that, and I think we're all sharing the pain from that as we run across stuff that the DA's office needs right now, so.
All right, any questions for Kevin?
Thank you. I'm heading right along to emergency meeting. Well? Yeah, I met with emergency management staff a couple of weeks ago, we went over everything that I need to know and they need to know, and made sure all the communications and contacts have been updated, so that we can continue operating smoothly. It's great staff, as an example, they prepared this great monthly report for you to give, and I appreciate that. The, I'm not gonna go through the whole thing, I'm just gonna hit a couple of highlights that I think the committee would be interested in. The department did a meeting with the municipalities along Lake Shore for an after-action meetings on the 2019 lake flooding, talking about what went right, what could be done better, and preparing an after-action report for that. And I think that's gonna be very important, since the lake seems to be high already, and heading for a repeat of last year. There's gonna be two radiological drills this year, state evaluated one on June 16th, which is why I wanna get the director replaced as soon as I can, so I don't have to deal with flooding or drills.
All our priorities.
The, and the second one is a federally evaluated drill of our reception center, and that is the, the reception centers at the state fairgrounds, that is where people would be evacuated in the event of a nuclear accident that involves a release. So, that has to be drilled, as well as our own agencies that maybe are more familiar with the USC. Our radiological folks did a great job last year of training, trained over one thousand emergency workers from thirty-five support organizations in topics such as dis symmetry, notification, evacuation, and use of potassium iodide. That's very important to keep, keep all the emergency responders up to date on that. And in terms of potassium iodide, our, our supply expires, and we are expecting more to be shipped to the county this year, so there will be a distribution program set up to replace everyone's KI. If you don't know what that is, that's the little pill that we're all supposed to have in our refrigerators, if you live within ten miles of the nuclear power plant that you would take in the event of an accident to protect your thyroid. Did I miss anything that you filled us with?
On Friday, we did have our first Lake Shore flooding call with New York State, so just a quick update on that, hadn't had a chance to see you yet this morning. So, we are starting bi-weekly calls with New York State, all of the counties along the Lake Shore, join the New York State agencies, they give us updated information, we did post some questions to them, that they're gonna get some answers for us, and they also told us at NICMA, coming up in a couple weeks, they have prepared a set of tools for each county that takes GIS data and looks at different lake levels, and using those lake levels, you can look at an overlay essentially of what areas in your county would be affected by a lake level of such and such height. So, they are gonna distribute that. We did ask them if they've looked at any modeling similar using wind speeds or wave action, but they're not prepared, so that's the majority of our issue, is the wind and the wave action is where a lot of our, not just the static lake level, but in a couple weeks they will be providing us a couple tools.
Especially the location of our county. Jerry or Kathy, do you have anything? Legislator Klein?
So, patiently, potassium iodide calls, is it provided by the nuclear firm?
I think they regularly sort of can, can provide them, they provide them.
We don't take them, I know that.
Yeah, because I've never seen it, oh, I am.
Okay, EMS?
Couple of different things, EMS education, today is our kickoff for a new pilot that we're running in the course, it's an EMT academy, you know, being in the same building as workforce New York, we see the different posters in our elevator, and one of them said, you know, wanna be a carpenter, they're looking to recruit, train, and employ the next generation of carpenters, and this is essentially what this is. Metro Ambulance has employed six individuals, we're running an academy to train them, so, you know, they went out and did the recruiting, they're gonna pay for the instruction, we're acting as the course sponsor. So, it's a little bit of a different model for EMS education, it's very exciting for us, and they'll end in, in April, we'll be able to give you a report after that about how this model went, but certainly, a different way to look at EMS education, and our county is certainly gonna benefit from having six new providers in the next few months. We're working with the health department and looking at have they vaccines, vaccines for our first responders, EMS and fire agencies, and then we're also monitoring the coronavirus. Just wanna put it out there that the Just want to put it out there that the CDC does have accurate updates every day. If you wanted any additional information on the coronavirus, I did pull some information from the CDC website, that you're welcome to take with you, but it is a good resource for you to use.
Okay.
Wash your hands. There's a death, one, the hands, and if you're safe, stay home. One last, this just came up this morning, the state OEM is having a conference call regarding coronavirus today at noon. So we will have one of us on that call.
Dan, we're up.
Thank you. Basic report for month report, other than the first part, we're up over 24 structured fires already this year. It's just a month into it, we've got four fatalities in a very trying January. We're working on public service announcements to get out, working with some of the TV stations to have them not cut out the most important part of the interviews, when I mentioned that you need working smoke detectors and clean chimneys are a good way out of the house, and that's the part that cut out of the interview, because apparently that doesn't sell news. So we're working on that, but it's been very busy keeping sheriff's department busy and DA's office, so everybody's been working great together. I hope things settle down. Several course completions, excuse me. We did just finish, we had county weekend at the New York State Fire Academy. What that is, is County Chiefs Association sponsors a training weekend at the State Fire Academy. We had just over 70 people attend, and they took part in five different classes. So it was a Friday, Saturday, Sunday. We just started a new basic class, started on the 21st, and that runs through June. And then we actually have a scheduling meeting with the state fire instructors and our state reps tomorrow, scheduled out through spring, early summer train. Everything else is really pretty much self-explanatory, we're working on grants, we are moving forward with a tech rescue grant, we've just completed some purchase recs, material, keep that moving forward, and we'll work on it forward. This appeared.
That's all right. The basic fire department started, the numbers that are in that, how, they look good or?
It's 24.
24, is that?
That's max we've been putting in the class. We actually had a waiting list, so with our waiting list, we go through, and we'll allow like two from each department, and then if it doesn't fill out, we'll go down through the waiting list and put one more, so we sort of try to balance it out. Since we had four or five left on the waiting list, so once this one's done, if they do just the exterior portion, it's about two and a half months. If they go into the interior part, it takes roughly five, five and a half months to do a class, so as soon as that one's done, we'll start another one. So we do two a year. Last year, we did three of the basic classes, and it really put a huge load on our state instructors, because there's some, we have six state instructors, we have five right now, they have one opening, and some of the nights for the classes, it takes three or four instructors. So they do two nights a week, plus I think four Saturdays through the length of the class.
So that right now, these 24, is that kind of keeping up with our attrition rate, the guys that are leaving the fire service, you know, like the, the answer?
I, yes and no.
It's good they were hearing that the numbers unfold, class numbers unfold, but is that?
Right. It's, it's keeping up to an extent, the problem is, it's not so much the people leaving, it's getting younger people that come into the volunteer fire service, which is all in the question.
Good. All right. Promotion.
Thanks. Just a few updates for the updates. Since where we started, our numbers actually, I keep saying our numbers are low, our numbers are actually picking up a little bit. We had, as of, actually, as of Friday, we've had 28 16-year-olds since it started on October 1st, 2018. Since if the 17-year-old phased in, as of last October, we had seven, so the number's picking up a little bit, it's going to be kind of catching up. And questions for that? Our cognitive behavioral intervention grant was, we got renewed for 2020, we're actually going to be running two programs here, we were running, thinking for a change, which is an evidence-based program, we're now going to be doing interactive journaling with them too, so we'll be able to capture some more inmates than we were doing before, do some programs. We started a group of seven last Monday, so hopefully that'll move along. And I just added bail reform, I was just going to mention, I know we had a lot of talk about pre-trial release and bail reform. Our numbers have dropped off some with pre-trial, seems like they converted some of the pre-trial cases we had to ROR, and generally, we're not getting the numbers reported, so it's since obviously bail reform's supposed to be restricted release, and apparently judges are seeing ROR, obviously, at least restricted for pre-trial, so we're not seeing many pre-trial cases. See how that goes. I think what's going to happen is eventually it'll cycle around, once we, you know, people aren't showing up for court, we're probably going to end up going back up at some point, but right now, the numbers are dropping.
Great.
That's all.
Good. Any questions for? Do I have something?
Yeah, sure, can we get?
Search arrest.
Thank you. You have the year-end report for 2019, your packet, so I'll just go over some of the highlights. For the new committee members, search and rescue is all volunteer team, there is close closely with law enforcement and DC and various agencies to help locate people who are reported missing. And in 2019, we had 40 calls, out of those, 18 were resolved before the team was actually activated and sent on a search, and then 22 were activated searches. And from those, 16 of those calls were for autistic individuals. The predominant number of our searches are for elderly or autistic individuals, and then also lost children. A lot of them take place in local recreation and hiking areas, or in areas around the person's home, if it's someone that wandered off. This year, at the end of this month, we'll start our training academy. We hold a training academy every two years. We have 10 people enrolled so far, about half are from Anadaga and half are from Sudo County, and we work closely with Anadaga County Wildlife, Wilderness Search and Rescue Team for honor training and also honor searches. So that academy will run about four months, with them having about 90 hours of instruction, and that they'll, those who successfully completed will graduate in June. Last year, we did receive funding from the Sudo County Community Foundation, and that grant was used to purchase mapping software and computer equipment for the team to use and the equipment trailer that we use on searches. And then we just submitted a grant to the Stewart's Foundation last week for some more educational materials and some more equipment for, to be used in our searches. We did several presentations last year for Boy Scout and Girl Scout training in the county, to instruct children and their parents on things to do if they do get lost in the woods, how to keep themselves safe, and how to make it easier for people to find them. And then we also had a training scheduled for February 22nd, it's a Saturday at the Sudo Town Fire Department, and that is a prolonged wilderness search training, and it will go over equipment and techniques for people out on wilderness, first aid, and those kinds of issues. And the emergency responders will be receiving invitation to that, the details are just getting finalized, but that's being organized by the search and rescue team.
Any questions?
I just, I just want to thank her again, I do it several years, I really appreciate what you do for us. You, you're not going out in the middle of June when mosquitoes are not fighting like that, I understand that, and I want to personally thank you.
Well, thanks, it's definitely a team effort, and I'll pass that along, it's appreciated.
Okay. Thank you. Richard, do you have something?
Yeah, sure. How many inmates are we housing out, or are we able to keep them all inside right now?
No, we haven't been housing out, but we're about half right now, about 75 to 80 inmates, so we have plenty of room. I suspect what's going to happen in the next three to 12 months, is all these people that are being issued warrants tickets aren't showing up, as we predicted, and we're going to be issuing warrants, and then we'll be all, second time, putting our staff at risk. So our population, I anticipate climbing right back up to full capacity in our ballots.
And quite honestly, legislature Klein, you said, how many are we able to keep in? We can't keep many of them, because with the bail reform, we got a lot of them all gone. With that, I'll understand the motion to adjourn.
One more question. Once they pick them up on the warrant, are we going to have to release them again? How's this move all pan out then? Are we just encircle?
And that becomes the question is to, once they get picked up, the court may have a lot of warrants, if it's initially out of the year ticket, and they show up, the court's likely going to have to ROR them. If it's something where we've already been arraigned, when they get picked up, we have to demonstrate that it's been a local and persistent failure to appear, and so the question becomes, what's persistent? Common, you have to miss one appearance, it's not going to be persistent two. We were kind of looking at guidance in other sections, if somebody's persistent, tell the defender, it's in two fighter duties, this is the part. So we're probably going to be looking at some of, in this court, at least two to three minutes, but then we have to show that it's local, we're going to intentionally. Basically, starting January 13th, we started having just tickets coming to that court, having appearance from, to kind of hit a risk, depending on the right, somebody's with that, you know, two, three people show up that you're supposed to, we have two or three people supposed to show, nobody showed. Let's say we're kind of adding them right now.
Well, I would like to say that contrary to all of us who have been very vocal opposing the bail reform and all the discovery changes and all of that, from handed down from the state, I do want to commend our departments who have done an excellent job keeping up with what they have to do, and are abiding by the state law. They know that we do support you and all that you're doing, but we don't appreciate the new laws that are going to develop us.
Appreciate the training. What I kept going on, as at the beginning of this last week, got together with a handful of other DA's, we're basically trying to look for a middle road if we can, you know, bail reform's been giving a lot of play, discovered, fire control, burning everybody. So I talked, same way down to the conference, a gentleman with the State Defenders Association in the Philadelphian County, the evening sectors, 15-day time limit, some reason, he was on the defense side, he was talking about, it's something that's unachievable. So he and I started talking about some potential numbers, and I got talking with the DA in Holster County, the chief public defenders in Holster County, so out of the State Defenders Association for this year, they were trying to set the meeting in a nice week or so, get together and say, what actually makes sense, is actually some DA's have set great, they're managing the bar association, calling the defenders off and saying, we're just getting overwhelmed with too much stuff, we can't process it all. So either on the defense side, we're working, of course, we'll leave on this. So hopefully, we'll be some practitioners together, maybe we can come up with a middle road that makes sense, some timeframe that makes sense, not just getting the books and all the way to listen. And I have to say, now, minority leader Barkley's been fantastic, he's reached out to me, he's talked to folks in law enforcement, to make sure that our voice is being heard on this issue, and really fortunate to have this other market there, not the key force.
Okay, with that, motion to adjourn.
Tell you one thing, I just want to bring up, I've been in contact with Sheriff Franz Spike from Yates County, about coming up here, he's like the state expert on the slow-moving and the vehicle thing, and I would encourage anybody on the Public Safety Committee to please attend this when we get it set up, because we are going to pass some kind of local legislation, it's going to have to go through this committee, and just, when I get the date and time set up, please try to attend that presentation.
We'll make sure everybody does.
Are you going to send it to, not just legislative, you're sending it to us as well?
Oh, it'll be, it'll be like county line.
I'm going to send it to fire, to fire services, this is not meant to bring the men and my and/or Irish community in, it's from an administrative, how we address it with them. So the fire departments, EMS.
Okay.
Including law enforcement and courts legislators.
How long of a presentation is it?
About 90 minutes.
90 minutes?
We'll probably end up at the door of college, like, just hear them like that.
Okay.
Just one more thing, Sheriff, I want to thank you, your, your group there, your Sheriff's Association, their stand on the marijuana issue, I appreciate that. That's going to be an expensive discount if that comes about.
Motion to adjourn now. He is sort of a Draco, second guy, legislature Klein, all in favor, say aye.